Good evening. Welcome to Power for Living Hour, our Bible Study Hour. I'm gonna open up with prayer. Father God, we come before you thanking you for another opportunity, Lord God, to come into your house of worship, Lord, to hear your word, God. I ask that you increase, Lord, and let Brenda decrease, God. We ask that your word go forth, Lord. We thank you for your Holy Spirit's presence, Lord, and we just ask, Lord, that we get everything that you have for us tonight, Lord. Help us to hear with your ears and your understanding, your wisdom, Lord, and help us to apply it to our lives that we might glorify you in the living and being able to bless your people in Jesus mighty name I pray. Amen. The title tonight is Jesus Christ, the Savior. The background readings come out of Isaiah seven and four. Isaiah seven and four. Luke two eight through eighteen. Luke two eight through eighteen. Acts five twenty-nine through thirty-two. Acts five twenty-nine through thirty-two. Acts thirteen twenty-two through twenty-three. Acts thirteen twenty-two through twenty-three. First John two and two. First John two verse two. Titus two fourteen. Titus two verse fourteen. Ephesians one verse seven. Ephesians one verse seven. And Matthew one eighteen, that's the devotional reading. It's coming from Matthew one eighteen through twenty-five. Matthew one eighteen through twenty-five. I'm gonna read the central verse and then I want somebody in the front to start with Isaiah seven and four, give a little insight. The central verse says, "And she shall bring forth the son, and thou shall call his name Jesus; for he shall save his people from their sins." Matthew one twenty-one, King James Version. "And she shall have a son, and you are to name him Jesus; for he will save his people from their sins." Matthew one twenty-one, the New Living Translation. Could I get somebody to read Isaiah seven and four, please? And give a little insight, please?
Seven and four.
Yes, ma'am.
"And say to him, Take heed and be quiet; do not fear or be faint-hearted; for these two stubs of smoking firebrands, for the fierce anger of Risen and Syria, and the son of Rehmel- Meler." This was the time when God had promised his protection to Israel. And they had, there were two kings. One was the king of Syria and the other, let's make sure. The king of Syria, Syria and Israel, and Israel, the king of Israel. They seemed to be like, you know, hot-headed or evil. But God was telling the people, you know, fear not. I promised that I would deliver you. And he said that, in other words, they would soon die. He was planning on removing them off the face of the earth. So, in other words, he's trying to tell us, you know, in spite of what we see, fear not. Because if you read the word of God shortly after that, they were assassinated. So, God fulfilled his promise to his people, that he would, he will deliver them and protect them.
Yes, ma'am. Like you said, they were, they came up against Jerusalem and Ahaz was the king at the time, and they didn't want him to be the king. They wanted somebody, they wanted to somebody else. And so, they had waged war together and they were coming against them. But Ahaz was sent a message from Isaiah, from the Lord, and the Lord told, told him, he said, you know, be careful. He told him that not to, he said, and I'm reading from the, I think mine is the amp, not the amp, application. It says, "Be careful, keep calm, and don't be afraid. Don't lose heart because of the two smoldering stubs of firewood; because the fierce anger of Risen and Aram, of the son of Rehmalai, Rehmalai, and Aham and Ephraim and Rehmalai's son, had plotted their ruin. They had plotted his ruin, and they were coming up against him." And he was just saying that because, you know, if you go back and you look, and in verse two it said, "Now the house of David was told." So, David's descendants, they had, they have, they had, he, God had a covenant with Abraham, yes. And so, those people were gonna be saved, but they, they were gonna have to go through something, of course. And those two came against them, and, and of course, they didn't. They were, they were eventually both wiped out too. Their peoples were wiped out. Anybody else have anything on that?
It's, it's a good thing, like, can you imagine you going through when you fear for your life because you know there's a plot out for you, they don't want you. But God sent his messenger Isaiah to go to Ahaz. I mean, that should really be like an encouragement to us, be wondering and pondering even with what we're going through, or sickness, or the children, or marriage. You praying and you, sometimes you say, "God, I'm so tired of God, I don't know you're gonna do this." And there comes some, a messenger. I mean, you, you, you only know that it is God and that the courage Ahaz had and to say, "Don't give up. Trust me. Stand on my word. I will protect you." You, because it's still, then God has a calling on your life, where it's on upon your life. You know, people are wrong, you don't understand, and sometimes they try to, they wanna put somebody else there, and they feel like you're not the one, so they would plot or compromise or plan to remove you or whatever they have to do to get you out of the way. But God is faithful to his promises.
He was talking about him to keep calm, and some of the scriptures telling him not to fear, and you know, and faith and fear can't live together, you know. And he, and God had given a message, so that message was a promise, and he had to, he should have been focusing on that. But he went and he wanted to get help, and he didn't trust God. So, that was a, that was a form of doubt that was showing that he doubted what Isaiah had told him. He didn't trust God. He didn't trust God in it. Anybody?
I think this story is similar to when God appointed Saul king. The people, they wanted a king, and God gave them what they wanted because they didn't, they didn't trust God to handle all the warfare that, you know, the turmoil. This is like in our own lives when we were faced with a lot of trauma, turmoil, sickness, all kinds of stuff. We'll try all the other remedies, remedies of somebody. Can you call and get you a remedy for a bad cold? You'll call and talk to your girlfriend about how bad your husband treating you, and you'll do all of this right here and not trust God to handle the situation. It's the same thing here. And even God told Ahaz, I give you, he said, he would give, he said, test me. And Ahaz like, no, he had already made up his mind that he wasn't gonna trust God. He was gonna go with somebody that he thought could protect him from the Syrians that was coming to destroy Judah.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for that, Betty. I liked that. I forgot, you know. I read this, and there's so much in that, in the beginning of that, cuz like, he was telling him, when he, when he told him to calm down, be quiet, not to be afraid, that was just showing him to trust God that, that he was gonna be there in a time of, and what do we do? When something goes on, what, what is the first thing we do? We call out to God, but sometimes we don't say, oh, we're gonna wait on God. We're gonna hurry up and go try to fix it ourselves. So, when we're going through a situation, we just like, take over, take over. We're not trusting God to fix it for us. So, in a, in a sense, we're doubting him. We're doubting him, and...
And I have to say this too, that when we start on this journey, we don't automatically trust God to handle all of our circumstances. We grow into our faith. Once you accept Jesus Christ as your Savior, then you, you, you jump into the fire. You know, you say, well, I'm on, I'm on God's team. I'm gonna do everything I can to be a spiritual person, and I'm gonna, I'm not gonna believe what this world is telling me. That's where it all boils down to, physical versus spiritual.
Yes, ma'am, and, and we all know it is a process, right? It is a process, and it's a day-to-day process. Anybody else before we move to Luke two eight through eighteen? Can I get somebody to read that?
"And there, and there were in the same country shepherds abiding in the field, keeping watch over their flock by the night. And lo, the angel of the Lord came upon them, and the glory of the Lord shone around about them, and they were sore afraid. And the angel said unto them, Fear not, for behold, I bring you good tidings of great joy which shall be to all people; for unto you is born this day in the city of David a Savior, which is Christ the Lord; and this shall be a sign to you. Ye shall find the babe wrapped in swaddling clothes lying in a manger. And suddenly there was with the angel a multitude of the heavenly hosts praising God and saying, glory to God in the highest, and on earth peace, goodwill toward men. And it came to pass, as the angels were gone away from them into heaven, the shepherds said one to another, Let us now go even unto Bethlehem and see this thing which is come to pass, which the Lord hath made known unto us. And they came with haste and found Mary and Joseph and the babe lying in a manger. And when they had seen it, they made known abroad the saying which was told them concerning this child. And all they had heard it wondered at those things which were told them by the shepherds. But Mary kept all these things and pondered them in her heart."
Yes, ma'am. You wanna share?
The birth of the Lord Jesus Christ, our Savior, and...
The first ones that got to hear of him were shepherds, lowly people. So, if you think about that, they were given, they were given that before anybody else. They didn't, a king didn't get that message that there was another king coming into the world. It was somebody that you wouldn't have expected to get that message. They got the message, and they were lowly. They were in a position to see that, like, we think sometimes that, that person that's out there in the street can't do something. Somebody's been in church all their life are the only ones that can do something. But that person out in that street might be the one that God chose for it, and, and we look down on them. So, these people were, they were just, just shepherds. And they were given sort of a, of assignment, a task to go out and spread that message. And then when they did, when they spread this message, when they had spread it. I'm sorry, Mom. I just lost my whole train of thought. I am so sorry. Hold, just a minute. Let me look back at my little notes. The, the announcements were to the shepherds, and the, the shepherds are considered lowly in society, were the first to hear the good news, and they were to emphasize, this good news emphasized the message of God's salvation and all, because they were lowly. You would think, like I said, that somebody of, of higher standards would have heard that. And then it said, the response of the shepherds, what was the first thing they did? When they heard it, they were seeking him out. They wanted to go seek. So, that's what we should be doing. We hear that good news, and a lot of us, you know, when we heard that God was good and that he could do this, or somebody came and told us that, we wanted to go know for ourself. So, what do you do? You immediately go searching. That's what they did. That's what we should be doing, immediately going searching. But people that don't know him are not gonna immediately do that because, like Betty said, they gotta get to know him. And then, and then, you know, we should humble ourselves. These are some of the things that I thought about. We should humble ourself and, and know God can and will use anybody. And he used those shepherd, those shepherd men to go spread this news. We should share the good news with others, spread joy and hope, and take time to read and search the scriptures so that we will know, that we would know and have a deeper face, deeper faith and an understanding of the word, and to make it a priority to see Jesus daily in our lives. And that is one of the things that we've seen, that the response, the response of the shepherds, they immediately did something. The Bible said they immediately did. They immediately went. Anybody else got something on that? I know you seen something else besides me.
What I, it's, okay, what I just wanted to bring up is that Christ brings peace. And the, the two, in these two scriptures that we've read, the theme that I've picked up on was fear. And the angels of the, and, and other people saying, "Don't be afraid," because Jesus Christ brings peace. And he, he brings a calming spirit. That's all I wanted to share.
Thank you. Thank you. And we'll move on. Nobody else is gonna say anything. We'll move on to Acts five twenty-nine through thirty-two. Acts five and twenty-nine through thirty-two says, "Peter and the others decided..." Peter and the other apostles replied, and like I said, I'm reading out of the, I keep thinking, application. I wanna say amplified, but application. "Peter and the other apostles replied, We must obey God rather than human beings. The God of our ancestors raised Jesus from the dead, whom you have killed by hanging him on the cross. God exalted him to his own right hand as prince and savior, and that he might bring Israel to repentance and forgive their sin. We are witnesses of these things, and so is the Holy Spirit, whom God has given to those who obey him." So, this, this is just letting us know that they knew because they were being persecuted. They were being persecuted. And they were told that they weren't supposed to be spreading this good news. And they were threatened, they were locked up, they were in jail, and, and then they were released. They were released, and they, and they still went on out and did what they knew to do. It was something that God had commanded them to do. And they were, they went ahead and spread the news, and they made it a priority. And they said that we must obey God rather than human beings. You know, sometimes we go to work, and we know our boss will tell us something, and sometime it may not be right. And, and she, you know, we might say, oh, you know, I gotta do what my boss says, but I know it's wrong. Well, we, we have got, we people have got followers of God. We know that we should do what God say do, and we have to make a stance, and we have to choose right from wrong. And I mean, you could do whatever you wanna do, but we know that we need to follow what Christ would have us to do. But also it said, God, they raised God from the dead. But also it said, God, um they raised God from the dead. It said that God of our answers ancestors raised God from the dead. They witnessed this with their own eyes. And so, you know, the Holy Spirit, they said, we witness of these things and so is the Holy Spirit whom God has given to those who obey him. And they were trusting and believing that that's what they were gonna receive. That they were gonna receive the Holy Spirit, everybody witnessed to that. Um in some situations, like I said, we won't be able to obey God and the human authority. But we should obey God's authority, no matter what, no matter what it might cost us. And and in Luke six and twenty-two, it says, blessed are you when people hate you, when they exclude you, but you know, I'm not reading from King James, so you know what the King James says. Blessed are you when people hate you, when they exclude you and insult you and reject your name as evil because of the son of man. So we know that if we do what God say do, we're gonna be blessed, no matter what. We might lose our job. We might be told to uh leave, but God will bless us with another job. Anybody else? The story, the story though, I guess I should be telling y'all stories, y'all wanna hear me, nobody's saying that, so that'll keep the the conversation going. Uh the Sanhedrin deliberated in all of this, cuz like it was from verse twenty-six to go all the way through forty-two. Uh there was a um one of the Sanhedrin's and his name was Gamali. He advised him not to kill those uh Peter and um the other person that was with him and right now my, it just blows my mind, I just forget it right now, the name. But he told him not to kill them and because there would be some repercussions from that. And so they, you know, they did let him go and that was um how they got out of that. The apostles knew their prior- priority and in some situations, we won't be able to obey God, both God and human authorities as those, at at those times, we must obey God and trust his word as the ultimate truth. And so we know that integrity is important, honesty and transparency in in deal in our dealings. And then to recognize that deceit, it it can cause some problems and also grieve the Holy Spirit. I don't know if you've ever felt the Spirit grieve within you, but it's not a good feeling. It's not a good feeling at all. I I I've done that uh one time and I didn't realize what was going on, I literally fell sick to my stomach. And I talked to my shepherd and I told him the situation. And then he told me the feeling of how, what I was feeling was that I had grieved the Spirit. Um Acts thirteen twenty-two through twenty-three, Sharon. Twenty-two through twenty-three.
I'm reading from the New Living Translation.
Yes ma'am.
But God removed Saul and replaced him with David. A man about whom God said, I have found David, son of Jesse, a man after my own heart. He will do everything I want him to do. And it is one of King David's descendants, Jesus, who is God's promised Savior to Israel.
Uh did you read twenty-two through twenty-three? Okay. And what what do you get on that, Sharon?
God is just letting him know that he was removing one to replace David as the leader cuz he's a man after his own heart. He's basically giving his background of who David is.
And um
these two scriptures, can I say something?
Go ahead.
These two scriptures, talking about when um God uh God anointed um so to be the uh Israel's first king, was it Israel or Judea? Israel's first king. Okay, he gave them what they wanted. But Saul, when he became king, he became so prideful and so disobedient. God had to remove him. And um in his place, he put David. And David, when they say a man after God's own heart, he means that David, when we fall down, we get back up. We repent, we ask God forgiveness cuz David was not a perfect man and we all, if we read the Bible, we know he he did some things. You know, he was, he was, he 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 was not a perfect man, but he always remembered um where his help came from. He always remembered that God could, would keep his promises. And when he failed, he got back up, he repented, he asked God to forgive him. And so that's why God loved David so much. So when we fall down and we we do things we know we shouldn't do and sometimes we do things we don't know that we shouldn't do. But uh when we repent and ask God to forgive us of our sins and we forgive those who trespass against us also, then he restores us back to uh to him.
Amen, and and like you said, he found, he's, he said, I found David, son of Jesse, a man after my own heart. And he knows our hearts, he knows deep down in our hearts um what we, what we are, what we're gonna do, he already knew any, everything that we're gonna do anyway. And um he said that he would do everything I want him to do. And that's what we should be striving to do, everything that he wants us to do, you know? Um and sometimes I know like Betty talk about when you first come, we don't know, we don't do. Sometime we don't even ask and we get up and just start moving. We just start moving and we know God wants us to do certain things and um but we have to include him, you know? We have to include him in our, in our everyday. And and so we can, when we including, our hearts are gonna change. They're gonna eventually change to just doing the things that we know that he wants us to do. We're gonna feel him inside of us telling us that we're moving and doing it. We're moving and doing, anybody else have anything on thirteen twenty?
And I was just thinking about how with the scripture where it says, Jesus Christ, the Savior is our title. And how the humbleness, David wasn't perfect, but he was sincere, he was obedient. You know, he repented for everything, just how when they came, the shepherds or the angel came to the shepherds, they was the humblest. And that's what God sees, like you said, he knows the heart. So it's not about being perfect or being high of status.
Amen.
That God uses who he used for that humility, cuz that's where he find the hope and the values it.
Amen. Amen. Um first John two and two. Y'all the next thing you wanna read that? And he is the propitiation for our sins and not for ours only, but also for the sins of the whole world. Here we're talking about Jesus Christ and he he was the payment for our sins, not for ours only, not for just the church, but just for tho- for those who come to know Christ as their personal Savior. Anybody else have anything? Thank God.
Amen.
Thank God. Um he stands in as our our defense attorney, he stands in as our mediator before God. Um he he satisfied God's requirement and removed the sins that um that we have. We um not saying that we will be sinless, but if we continue to speak God, study, uh apply his um word to our life, um it will change us, it'll change those and the sins will not be, they will seem, for me, cuz I can remember I was doing all them real big things and now it's little bitty things that that get me caught up. I stubbed my toe and you know, I don't, I don't say a bad word anymore, but in the head, you know, the mind says and it's like, but so uh when we get him in his, in our life and we start living for him, um studying and and I like um what I like the, what Sharon says, cuz I was listening to her the other night and she was talking about uh uh sisterhood. And and you got somebody you can go to and talk to when you start struggling and they help you. And Christ is in them helping us through them and other people. You know, that's what we're supposed to be doing, is letting him live in us and us spreading his love and his, the joy, the peace, the hope. But um and you know, I was thinking sometimes it's difficult cuz I remember when Betty came in talking about being hard to forgive and, but she wasn't the only one. Um it took me a minute to forgive people of things they done, but then I had to look at myself. What did I have, what did I do in them treating me the way they treated me? And then I had to forgive them, I had to forgive, they had to forgive me cuz I've done something to them in order for them to have done something to me. And I had to learn forgiveness um.
That's what Pastor said Sunday before last about forgiveness, which is something I did not know. Just like love is a conscious act, active decision, so is forgiveness. So I'm on this kick where uh uh you know, I'm trying to find out how many other things are a conscious act of decision.
Yes ma'am.
But you know, but when you um say when you're reading your Bible and you studying your word, one word can trip you up. So then I'm Googling a lot. I'm out, I I I got the dictionary, I wanna know what this word is, how it applies. When they say study the scripture, it ain't just reading.
Yeah.
You have to meditate, you have to think about it and then it might come to you next week, what that scripture meant.
Lord help us.
Yeah, so and we got all kinds of resources, so there's no reason why you can't say, you can, you say, well, I can't read the Bible, it's too hard, that's what I see. That's just an excuse, we got too many resources right here. And so, once we start delving into uh the scripture, to me, it's like it's it's uh oh, i- i- it's a life of its own. And so, but you got to put in the work.
Like you said, it's a living word.
Yeah, but we we got to put in the work. That's what I wanna get stressed because it's a lot of work studying, you know? In your free time and you you feel like, well, I don't wanna, I wanna watch my show.
Lord help.
You see what I'm saying? So we don't, we don't um, you you you, first of all, i- i- to get, be transformed, you gonna have to put in the work. And it's gonna take a lot of work and the Holy Spirit is the one doing it. But once you start reading the word and then you start following this GPS, which is the Bible, and then it'll, it'll uh guide you in where you're supposed to, supposed to be. And that's how you get transformed by the renewing of your mind.
Yes ma'am.
You know, I was thinking about what this scripture, when it says that Jesus, he's atoned for our sins, cuz this was the law, people, you had to sacrifice a lamb and a perfect lamb. Well, that didn't atone for everything, nothing but the blood does. So with Jesus giving his life for us, that covers everything. There's nothing that we can do now that is not covered by the blood. And so that's, you know, that's the one thing that I got out of this, um when it said, he gave his life free for us. He gave it up, they didn't kill him, he gave it up, he surrendered. And you know, like, this is the Betty was saying, that's how we have to do in the word is just surrender to him, some, you know, submit and come to him so that we can get that understanding. Because when you first as believers and even if you've been in it for a long, you don't understand the scriptures and it may not apply to you when you're going through something, but when you pray and let that Holy Spirit guide you, then it's gonna give you, cuz you can read the same scripture today and get something else tomorrow. You know, and so that's just the thing of praying and getting that understanding and asking God. Um and like she said, there is no more excuses, you can Google, you can AI, everything, whatever, you have resources out there for you. But the main resource is the Holy Spirit.
Amen, thank you. Uh Titus two and fourteen. Who gave, who gave himself for us that he might redeem us from all iniquity and purify unto himself a peculiar people zealous of good works? Mother, what'd you get from that? Said that he gave himself for us to redeem.
For us and and we um
like Sharon said, he gave himself freely. Oh, he 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 has something to say in the beginning, he prayed, he's like, he didn't really wanna, he's like, Lord, do I have to? But he did it anyway, how many of us would have did that? Um just went ahead and did that without a big struggle. Um cuz we struggle with little things.
But you know, even in that, that gives us hope because God sent himself down in the flesh to go through every situation that we're gonna go through. And so we are gonna have doubts, you know, God, you called me to this and I know it. And but he overcame.
Yes.
You know, he then overcame every situation and that's the amazing, the hope and the amazing and gratefulness and faithfulness of God is that everything that we go through, it's already been overcome.
And you know, when you said that uh that he overcame, we can overcome. We've overcame a lot of things, we've overcame addictions, we've overcame all kinda things. If we, whatever we had, whatever problem, we have overcome a lot of them and we're here tonight. I mean, a lot of times I could just go look back at the things I used to do and I have to look back. Man, I'm not there anymore, I'm here, I'm here, thank you God. I'm not where I wanna be, but I'm here, I'm in a place of safety. I'm in a place of protection, I'm in a place to be fed. I'm covered.
I have to say this too, that when um Jesus, he 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 was God in human form. The Spirit, the Spirit i- can do anything. The Spirit is is God, God is, he's the source, he's the strength, he's, he's everything. So when Jesus came, cuz I I I kinda looked this up, he said, he's a wayshower. He he shows us how to be a spiritual being in this human body. Cuz this human body has limitations, but the Spirit does not. So when Jesus, he came down and um God sacrificed, he sent his only begotten son, sacrificed himself. The physical man, he sacrificed, but he couldn't kill that spiritual man. He's telling us that our spiritual man cannot be killed, it's eternal.
Yes.
So that's why, it's it's hard for me to explain it, but when when uh, you know, like when you get it, you get it. Because God gives it to you. And so that's why I say it was hard for him as a physical man, he wanted to live. But spiritually, he knew what he had to do, he had to sacrifice himself.
Right.
To restore us back to God, that's a hard thing to understand, isn't it? To, yeah, because it all started back with Yeah, because it all started back with Adam and Eve. Adam and Eve disobeyed God and they was, uh, cut off because they, you know, they, 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 they wanted to, they were disobedient. That separated them from God. So when God had to bring us back to Him, align us with Him, he had to have another, or had a greater sacrifice than the ones that these priests were doing all over and over again, cause he said the law could not save us.
Right. Thank you, Sister Betty.
He came to give us peace, hope, eternal life and to make us a people of zealous work. Zealous work. Not jealous, zealous.
Thank you. Um, we're going to Ephesians one and seven.
Have the new living translation, Ephesians one and seven. He is so rich in kindness and grace that he purchased our freedom with the blood of his son and forgave our sins.
So God loved us so much. He loved us so much that he gave his son. He, he gave his son up for us. In him, in him, you know, there was two things that we benefited was like redemption and forgiveness. Yes. He paid the price to release us from slavery or sin and its devastating consequences. So I thank God for that. I thank God for it. Um, we have been, we have been freed from every restraint that we can live fully and become all that he intended for us to be. And like Sister Betty said, we need to get in the word and I'm talking to myself and nobody else to stay in the word. Um, because that's the only way we'll learn, you know? That's the only way we're gonna learn to live and live right. And then be able to help somebody else out too, in the process. Anybody else have anything to say before we move to Matthew one eighteen to twenty-five? Matthew one eighteen through twenty-five. Somebody wanna read it? I'll read. Um, and this is how the birth of Jesus, the Messiah came about. His mother was pledged to be married to Joseph, but before they came together, she was found to be pregnant through the Holy Spirit. Because Joseph, her husband was faithful to the law and yet did not want to expose her to the public disgrace. He had in mind to divorce her quietly, but after he had considered this, an angel of the Lord appeared to him in a dream and said, Joseph, son of David, do not be afraid to take Mary home as your wife. Because what is conceived in her is from the Holy Spirit. She will give birth to a son and you are to give him the name Jesus. Because he will save his people from their sins. All this took place to fulfill what the Lord has said through the prophet. The virgin will conceive and give birth to a son and they will call him Emmanuel, which means God with us. When Joseph woke up, he did what the angel of the Lord had commanded him and took Mary home as his wife. But he did not consummate the marriage until she gave birth to a son and he gave him the name Jesus. So in this, we see how the birth of Jesus came about. Uh, she was pledged to be married to Joseph. Before they had even consummated or did anything, she was pregnant. She was found to be pregnant. And it was through the Holy Spirit. And, and we, we see that Joseph was going to try to divorce her, but he didn't wanna do it. Um, and, and make a disgrace, uh, make her a disgrace. So he, he was gonna do it quietly. That's what he, his plans were. But we see the angel of the Lord appeared to him in a dream and Joseph is the son of David. This is how Jesus, how Jesus was brought about, the son of David, that line, the son of David. And it was telling him not to be afraid that Mary, uh, to take her as your wife. Because she had conceived the baby by the Holy Spirit. What would you think of waking up and somebody done told you that? Go ahead, Sharon.
Well, it just makes you think how humble and how amazing this story really is. That from the very beginning that he chose marrying Joseph, that he chose, um, someone that wasn't high up, wasn't prestige, um, and that they wasn't even married, like they wasn't even married to each other yet. They was in the process. And this is how Jesus came into the world. You know, he came into the world under already, people was gonna look at her. Joseph was like, um, we'll just cancel and hide it. I don't want you to be disgraced. I don't wanna be disgraced, cause he was a righteous man. But how God uses all that and still, that's that protection, his covering that he has even around Joseph and Mary during this time, because back in them time, Mary could have been stoned, you know, she could have been killed for, they would say, who's gonna really, you tell somebody you got pregnant by the Holy Ghost and then, yeah, right, we gonna stone you, you know? Prove it later. So I mean, you think about all the things that she actually went through, just mentally of knowing. And then even with Joseph's knowing that God's told him that, and that's how we are. So God can tell us something and we knows it. But think of how it's gonna look, who's gonna say this and, you know, them are the plants of doubt that comes. And it just shows how God just comes in humbly and is like, look, this is, this is how I want everyone to bring my son. And this is how, how he gets the glory and it's not nobody else.
Right. And even when it said that his name would be Emmanuel, which means God with us. And we know he's got a lot of names and they all have meanings, but, um, this one is, uh, to me, it's, you know, that's one of the first ones that I learned was God is with us. You know, and they call him Emmanuel, but he physically is with me, you know? And, um, I, 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 I mean, I just think that's pretty mean. There's a promise there too. God is with us always. He's with us always. Um, and it said that when he woke up, um, he did what the angel had commanded. It was a command. It was a command for him to do that and he took her as his wife. Um, and you know, if you read the story all the way through, she was blessed to have more children. She had more children with him and, um, but, but Jesus was the Savior. He was the Savior of the world. And thank God that Joseph didn't do that. What would happen to us? There would have been another plan somewhere, but what would happen to us? I mean, he had that. But you know, we already know God's plans are not gonna be, they're not gonna be messed up. He's gonna make a way. He's gonna make a way.
But as, as Sister Sharon was, uh, talking about, God always has a plan. I was thinking how he orchestrates each step, you know, even though it looks one way. You know, and then God says, no, that's not how it's gonna be, you know? But all we gotta do is stay still.
Right.
You know, but a lot of times we do things out of, uh, um, misunderstanding and all that and.
Our worry.
And then we, yeah, our worry or what is this, what they gonna say, but they, you know? But Mary and Joseph, even though Joseph had doubt, okay, about him marrying this woman and thought about divorcing her.
He was open.
He was a man that was faithful to God. So, and God knew that. That's why God could use him and, and do the things that, um, and he followed through what God wanted him to do. And then everything was gonna fall in place. But I was thinking about how God, he's such a, you know, conductor.
And he's done that with our own lives. He's done that with our own lives. I watched the crooked road for me to get back and be brought back here and straightened up. I was like, wow. Cause I wasn't intending on coming back, you know, cause I did all my dirt here. I wasn't intending on coming back. And he brought me right back here and then cleaned me up in front of all the people that seen me like that. You know, and I, and I, I, I had to go over it in my mind and watch the, the way it took. The bends, the turns and all of that and the, the hurts, the ups, the downs and just, you know, being in a place of not having anybody but God. Not having anybody but God and calling on Him and, and learning that I had to trust in Him. And knowing that eventually by, like, I tested him to see. I promise you I did, cause I was like, I'mma wait and see, Lord. I promise you I said those things. But he knew I was gonna say that too. And, and some of those things he did and all the ones that he did, I know was best for me. Um, he didn't do the, some of the things that I wanted because it probably wasn't right for me. But what he did for me, they were the best for me. Anybody else have anything on one eighteen and twenty-five?
When you look at it, all you can say is the Lord's doing and it is marvelous and we just can't explain the miracle.
Right. Thank God for His miracles in my life. Cause I say it was a miracle. It was a miracle. Key terms, Trinity. The unity of Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit as three persons in one. Godhead according to Christian doctrine. Waddling to wrap an infant with cloths that contain, restrain or restrict him or her. Passover lamb represents God's protection and the Israelites' deliverance from slavery in Egypt. The blood of the lamb was applied to doorposts, signifying that God would pass over their homes and spare their firstborn. Introduction. Sister Betty, could you read the introduction for me, please? And give a little bit of insight, please, ma'am.
The, the, the old and the new testament tell us of Jesus coming to earth, to the earth and let believers know the significance of who he is and why he is so significant in a life transforming way. The angel came to Mary and Joseph and let them know about Jesus being born. Mary knew that she had not been sexually active with a man, but the angel was telling her that she was with child. It was puzzling to her. Then the angel told Joseph that the babe was not by another man, but God had planted the babe there by the Holy Spirit. Joseph believed the angel and went ahead and married Mary and protected her. Through these books, the believer can find out why God sent Jesus. What Jesus taught, why he performed miracles, why he died, what the resurrection means to believers and what the Bible says about his return. The waiting time that early believers had helped provide purpose and helped to develop the character of believers everywhere. Advent is a season of waiting, hope and expectancy. As believers celebrate Christmas Day, they celebrate the birth of Christ and look forward to the day he returns. The religious world waited for the Savior to come because they knew that only the Savior could offer certain things. Amidst the confusion, the stress, the darkness that saps hopes, hope, and the Roman rule, Jesus the Savior is the only one who could help by offering a new life.
What stands out to you in that, sister?
There's a whole bunch, but, um, I'mma keep it short. Um, it's these books in the Bible, uh, it says, the believer can find out why God sent Jesus. Why did God send Jesus to save us?
Yes.
Because we had been, um, we had been torn through, uh, Adam and Eve's disobedience. We had been, um, out of a good relationship with God. So Jesus restored us back to Him. What, what did Jesus teach? I gotta go back to my notes now. He, um, he taught us, uh, um, he commanded us to love God with all our heart, soul and mind. And he taught about the coming of the kingdom of God. He taught us about repentance and forgiveness, mercy and compassion, humility, trust and faith, salvation, obedience to God's will. Why did Jesus die? He died to redeem us back, to buy us back, to free us from slavery. And by doing so, it was a gift of grace from God because grace is, and well, Pastor taught us this too, that grace is, is a gift and it's not by anything that we can do. That can bring us closer to God. It has to be the Holy Spirit that does the work.
Yes, ma'am.
And then, um, that other question, now why did Jesus, why did Jesus perform miracles? To demonstrate his authority, to prove his divine, uh, identity, he was a Messiah and to prove his power. And then, uh, he had to fulfill a prophecy. Because it says, if we have faith and obedience, I had wrote this down a long time ago. He promised us a lot of things. He promised us refuge, healing, deliverance, salvation, blessings, forgiveness, protection, security, provision, comfort, guidance. And as, uh, time goes on, my list gets longer and longer, but those are the promises. He promised us all of that if we believe and trust in Him. And I did not know all of this, but I'm finding it out. And I say, I wanna be on, on a, on the Lord's team. Sound like he, he, he got a powerful team over there.
Amen. Amen. Anybody else?
You know, as you were saying, his grace is just given to us, but the blessings, like the provision and all the hope and all that, it's a condition. It's a condition. We have conditional, you, we have to seek and we have to live for Him. It's not just given like his grace is given.
Amen. And they were talking about the Advent season and mostly Catholics and I think, uh, Protestants and, um, there are a few other uh, denominations that practice that, uh, Advent. I know in school, um, when I was at Saint Peter, they were lighting candles and they would, they had certain things to do and, and but, um, there was, there's also, uh, the black culture, some of the black culture do the Advent as well, you know? Um, I didn't understand it, so I tried to get all I could get when, you know, I was around certain people without overly asking too many questions, cause I didn't wanna, you know, bug anybody in. And I didn't see that ever happening in my family. So I'm like, we don't do that. I wonder why they do it, you know? And that's the only time I ask questions, but, um, but I, I think it was just the Catholic, the, some of the Methodist and Protestants and there might have been another group. I can't remember the other group. The discussion, um, the first two, uh, paragraphs, Sharon, you wanna read and then the next two? Uh, Sister Ava, you wanna read those? And then the conclusion, I'll let Elder Nixon read and we can all have, take a chance at answering the questions.
Christmas is a season of spiritual reflections on the foundation of the Christian's faith. It is the arrival of Jesus Christ, the Savior of the world. What does Savior mean? A Savior is one who saves anyone from any form or degree of evil. The greatest message of the gospel is
The greatest message of the gospel is about salvation and the Savior, salvation is redemption made effectual to the individual by the power of the Holy Spirit. The word Savior carries immense weight in the Bible, where it represents the divine deliverance and redemption offered to humanity through Jesus Christ. The prophet Isaiah prophesied that God would allow a virgin to become impregnated without a human man and bring forth a son. And his name would be Emmanuel, meaning God with us. The child would become the Savior of the world after the sin of Adam. Mankind no longer had the privilege to have fellowship with God like he had in the Garden of Eden. So Jesus, God the Word, and God the Son had to come to this world in divine, in a divine way. So that he could be the Passover lamb. He had to be without spot or blemish, so that he could be the lamb slain from the foundation of the world. Revelation thirteen eight.
You wanna give us a little bit on that before we go on to the next couple?
It's just letting us know that, um, the Christian believers believe that Christmas is a season of the reflection back of when Jesus did give his life and the, um, or his birth and, um, who he is, um, what he represents. And the way that he came in and how God, um, why he was came, you know, just like Mother Betty was speaking because of the separation that we was with God, he had to be that ultimate sacrifice of the perfect lamb. We were still under that law. We were still disconnected. And so he had to bring him in a way that, um, it was unmistakable, nothing but God and that, um, he was that Passover lamb, that super non-blemish, perfect in every way.
And, and we're not supposed to be celebrating Santa Claus, right? We're supposed to be, at Christmas time, we're supposed to be focusing on, on God, on Jesus. Um,
I wanted to also say that, uh, Jesus describes himself in the scripture as a way the truth and a light. And he said, nobody comes to the Father except through him.
Yes.
So you gotta have Jesus to have it to make everything work.
Amen. Um, Sister Ava? The last two paragraphs.
Jesus was willing to lay down his life and allow men to cruelly kill him so that believers could be saved. The wise men sought him to give him worship and praise. They had been watching the stars, for they knew that a new star would announce was coming. The shepherds were watching over their sheep, but they knew that a Savior was going to be born. So when the angels appeared that night, a light brighter than any that they had ever seen appeared to them. The angel of the Lord told them not to be afraid, for they were there to bring good tidings and great joy, which shall be for them and their neighbors. The angel let them know that the very day that he was talking to them, a babe was born unto them in the city of David, a Savior which is Christ the Lord. The angel told the shepherds that they would find the babe wrapped in swaddling clothes, lying in a manger. Then the host of angels joined in and they began to praise and worship God. God loves for his children to praise and worship him. And when the believers receive him as their God, it becomes a part of who we are.
Amen. What stands out to you there?
That although Jesus was able to get away from the people that killed him, he chose to, uh, give his life so that we could have eternal life and salvation and hope. And that the angels let the shepherds and everybody know that the baby was born and where they could find him. And they all, uh, praised and worshiped him. Because when we receive God, we should be able to praise and worship him at all times.
Amen. Amen. And everybody's, uh, praise and worship doesn't look the same. It doesn't look the same. Some people were up dancing, shouting, hands going. Some people are sitting down and they're just feeling it inside of them. Some people are crying and the cry, you might think they're crying about something there, you know, but they might be crying because they're happy. You never know. Everybody's praise is different. It's different. Anybody wanna, uh, say anything else on those last two? And then we're going to conclusions and that's Elder Nixon's.
Jesus Christ operates as the second person of the Trinity, for God draws. Jesus saves and the Holy Spirit seals until the day of redemption. John tells the believer that there are three that bear record in heaven, God the Father, God the Word, and God the Holy Spirit. They are one, but they each have their distinct function. God the Son is the Word, the Savior of the world. He is God who became flesh and lived and functioned in this world as a man. He is the one who separated himself from God and died for the remission of sin. But when he died, the sun stopped shining. He is the one who shed his blood so that each believer could become free from the bondage of sin. For every man was guilty of sin and could not connect back to God unless blood was shed. The word of the Lord gives every human the privilege to accept Jesus as their Lord and Savior. But what saith it? The word is nigh thee, even in thy mouth and in thy heart. That is the word of faith which we preach. That if thou shall confess with the mouth the Lord Jesus Christ and shall believe in thine heart that God had raised him from the dead, thou shall be saved. But with the heart, man believeth unto righteousness, and with the mouth, confession is made unto salvations. Romans eight, uh, ten eight through ten.
Yeah, you get Elder Nixon from that conclusion.
Well, um, as I was reading this, I was thinking about as far as, uh, Sister Betty was talking about. It comes back from Adam and Eve, cause Adam was the first son, but he fell from grace. He fell in disobedience. And so God didn't go, wasn't gonna let his plan fail. He wasn't gonna let his creation go to waste. He had another plan. So throughout the, the years of, uh, Christ's coming, he had another son. A son that was gonna be obedient because he came through flesh and that was God himself. And so, um, because God had a, had a redemptive plan to bring man back to himself. He had worked all the things of shedding the blood of animals and all the, um, commandments and all that. He had did all of that and it didn't work. So he said, I'm coming down. I'm gonna make a difference.
Right.
You know, so, uh, as we, as we look at the, the conclusion of this story, um, Jesus operates as a word, God is the Father, and then there's the Holy Spirit. And all three together come together to operate in the, in this world for us to be redeemed back to him.
Amen. Amen. Thank you, Elder Nixon. Um, question, first question is, why did the world need a Savior? And I think they've said that, but somebody said.
We had fallen, we had been disobedient.
Right. Right. What does a Savior do? Yes ma'am. He makes possible repentance or is, um, uh, teaches vital truths as Sister Betty was saying earlier, uh, offers hope, peace and sets a perfect example for us of how to live. And like she said, a lot more, a lot more. Amen. Yes ma'am. Number three, how did Jesus become the Savior?
They spoke of his word.
And, and, uh, four, why does believers celebrate Christmas? No, no, Sister Betty, that ain't it. Yes ma'am. Yes ma'am. Not to think about Santa Claus. Not to think about Santa Claus. Uh, we're gonna, uh, close with prayer. Lord God, I come before you tonight. I thank you, Lord, for the lesson. I pray that the lesson on this evening encourages us to trust in your promises, God, and to find peace in your presence. Knowing, Lord, that you are always with us. God, we thank you for the gift of your son, Jesus Christ, and the salvation that he brings to us. I pray of, uh, for a heart of humility and obedience, Lord God, not only for myself, but for all those here and those that hear online. Following the example of Christ, I pray that, uh, we boldly share the good news of Jesus Christ with others. And I also pray that your, your spirit continue to fill us with wisdom and understanding. Lord, I ask that you continue to help us, give us a holy boldness so that we might witness you even when we are, when in opposition, God, when we're struggling, when we're going through challenges, Lord. Help us to be the light, Lord. And I thank you, Lord, for your mercy, grace, your love and your kindness. Thank you for being with us when we're weak. You are strong, God, in Jesus mighty name. And I ask that you go uh, with us as we leave this place, but never from your presence in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Betty, it's time for you to teach. Teach a little more. You're doing good. I love it. I love your revelation. Amen.